Well, it was here, I don't know where it went.
Everybody ready?
Stay now.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the work session to order for Tuesday, February 20th. First is public comment, and we have Alberta Johnson here to speak with us. Ms. Johnson? Just go right to the podium there and state your name, and if you live in the city of Wilmer or not.
Alberta Johnson, yes, I do live in the city of Wilmer.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I do, right now.
Go ahead, you can address your concerns to the council.
Okay, I met with you guys back in June of last year with an issue because our sewer back, your sewer, not mine, your sewer backed up on 17th Street Southwest and flooded our basement. We had to gut the basement at an expense of $15,000 to us because we didn't know that you had to have insurance to cover that, and you guys, you, Mr. Kelvin, said you could not set a precedent and help us out. Well, last Saturday evening, I met with Gary in my pajamas at midnight to clean out the line again. It now has destroyed part of our basement again. Something has to be done. He tells me February 15th of last year, he cleaned it out under his routine maintenance. April 3rd of 2017, he was, they were called out about nine o'clock in the morning to clean it out again because it was plugged, and I mean, it really, it came up like a fountain at that time. Last Saturday evening at 10 o'clock, we noticed water on our basement floor again, and the stench this time was unbelievable, just unbearable. And that was, so, you're talking, February to February is a year, but in between there, you've had to clean it out. Now, we have technology available to us today that's unbelievable. You've got cameras that you can stick down in there, you've got anything that you can do to clean it out, to keep it cleaned out. What guarantee do I have? We're leaving on a vacation on Saturday. What guarantee do I have from you guys that come March 5th, when we return, that we're not going to have a horrible mess in our basement? You tell me if you can sleep at night. You look at me, Mr. Kelvin, look at me, I don't care. I am so upset because I'm not only upset about the fact that now, it was, what, the end of December, that we finally got the last piece of our floor down in our basement, in our laundry room. It's all gone again. We got carpet that's destroyed, we got walls that don't have sheet rock on them right now because we had to get somebody in there to get it out of there, otherwise it'd be mold and mildew. I'm on one of the strongest antibiotics that they can give me for sinus infections because I have these kind of issues, and this just astrobates it beyond belief when I have to smell it. I mean, we can't walk in the basement. Thankfully, we do have someone that has come and cleaned it up, but you can't walk in it until it is cleaned up, you can't live in the house until it's cleaned up. What guarantee do we have that this isn't going to do it again? Now, Gary has, he says, well, you put a backup flow, or backflow on it, I guess that's what you call it. Well, we've talked to the plumber last time when this happened, and we said, I understand there's a backflow-ish thing, and he says, I don't recommend it. So, he says, you're going to create more problems than you're going to have, which I can't even imagine that. Believe me, I can't imagine it. You don't have, have you ever had a sewer backup, anybody? So you know what I'm going through.
I, it's ironic, but I've had one backup in the year, to the date I had it a second time, and, and the first time I caught it early, so it was just in the laundry room, the second time I lost carpet stuff, and that's when I installed this thing, this $15 item in my floor drain, and I, when the city had the floods in, was it 16th of August when we had all the rain?
We didn't get a drop of water then.
But what I'm saying is that, I worked all night that night checking sewers, and we were inundated with water, then I knew we had issues, we were going to have a lot of sewer backups, we had probably hundreds of sewer backups, and I had this $10 item in my floor drain in my house, and I would typically get the backup because I'm a low person on the line, and I held it in my house, but my neighbor across the street got it because I had this $10 item in my line. I, I Googled this item because I have got an older home with older floor drain where you can't insert a typical backflow preventer in there, so I Googled it, and they recommended this type that, it, it's a friction, you tighten it up and it expands and holds the place. I actually talked to Ross yesterday about this, and he wasn't aware of this style of backup flow, and he was going to get ahold of you to try to put something like this in, and that's why I stopped at your home yesterday because I wanted to go to the four year.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have to work.
No, well, I know.
Have to work to help pay for the basement that we destroyed.
Um, can I speak a little more to the whole thing a little bit?
Mike, can you, uh, Gary, can you come to the mic?
Yeah, so, um, I've dealt with this for, um, my 35th year of doing this, so I've seen a lot of sewer backups in the time, and, and when her street was reconstructed, I, I didn't get the date, but I'm going to say it's been probably 10 years ago that that street was reconstructed, and at that...
They're almost that long ago, it was not before we moved in.
Yeah, so whatever that timeframe was that they reconstructed, so common practice when they reconstruct the street is that we televise the sewers to see what condition they're in, and so I know that that sewer was televised that time, and there was no data that, that, uh, said that we should replace that sewer. I, I didn't personally look at it, but, uh, Lynn and Whitman's the one that usually goes through that, and they look at that stuff, and, um, something's changed in that neighborhood because I've done that, you know, like I said, I've stood behind that blue truck for 25 years straight probably, and seen a lot of crap go downstream in those times, and, and when Ross and I were, after we jetted that line open at midnight, Ross, Erickson from Blumpkin, or Blumpkis Plumbing was there, I've worked with him countless times, he's a good man, and, and we were watching as the sewage was going down, there was probably about 18 inches of sewage in that manhole out in front of her place, maybe just a shade to the north, and there's golf ball-sized grease balls rolling down the line, so, you know, someplace, somebody's putting grease, and when you had grease and, and maybe disinfectant wipes, it could be as simple as dental floss, I mean, there's just some really things that are on the market today that weren't on the market 25 years ago that are, people are flushing down, and the results are lift station pumps and sewer backups. I mean, that's the two things that happens, and I mean, a little piece of dental floss can hook on something and grab some toilet paper and grease, and pretty soon you've got a backup. Now, I don't know, I, we will be televising your line, and we do televising this spring because now that that happened twice, we're going to look at it.
Can you do it right away before I leave on vacation?
I can tell you that, I would talk to Ross about putting one of these in, I'm serious, I swear by this, it's a, it ain't going to make it worse, it's not going to make it worse.
Well, when we talked to him the other night, he said, no.
Yeah, he was, he was thinking of a different style of a backup flow preventer.
Yeah, he said the backup, he was talking about when they...
Go in the line.
When you do have a plug.
Yes, you can get hooked on it.
And run a snake down, then they can't get their snake back out.
Correct, correct, but this is a whole different deal, and like in your instance, in your basement, you've got a bathtub, and, um, and, uh, you can, you know, had you get, you know, if we could have caught that a half hour earlier, uh, from our end of it, we could have probably saved you from having trouble, just unfortunate that that's the way it went, you know? Thank goodness you weren't in bed maybe, or maybe you were in bed and heard it, I don't know what happened, but, um, so, but...
So I think, I think where we're at is, I think, Mr. Johnson, I apologize, um... Mr. Johnson, I apologize, I mean, we generally don't respond back to the public, and, you know, you know, I, I understand that it maybe is offensive to you that I just look at you, but, I mean, that's what we're supposed to...
Well, you just sat there staring at me like, okay.
No, no, I'm just...
What is she doing here again?
No, no, that's not it at all, I'm, you know, I mean, I, believe me, I have compassion for people, and I wouldn't be here if I didn't, and the thing of it is, at the end of the day, we need to listen to you, but we also have to listen to everybody the same way, and if, if, you know, so, we normally don't take this type of thing during the work session, but we are taking it because you asked to speak, and so, but the council's the one that decided that there's nothing that we could do. We brought the information to the council, the council looked at the advantages and disadvantages of the policy that was presented to us by Chad Christensen, and council decided not to do that, and so that's what happened, um, and so that's the position that the city has taken. I think Gary, you know, work with Gary, and we'll help you however we can, but we have to follow the procedures that the city has, so for that, I'm sorry, and, um, that's where we're at tonight, so, thank you. Next, we have introduction of new employees, first, Chief Velt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we're here to introduce one of our new officers, Mike Christensen. Mike has been a employee of the Wilmer Police Department as a community service officer since August of 2015, and just was able to be hired on as a full-time officer in January. He's in probably week three or four of his field training process right now, and, uh, he's a native of New London, and just happy to have him on as a full-time employee. I told him that he'd keep his speech to under 15 minutes for you, so, in fact, he, he may just opt out on that if that's...
Okay, perfect. Michael, we're, uh, we're glad you're here, you're coming to a very good department, we've got an excellent police department here in Wilmer, uh, I speak for myself, but also for the entire council, that we're proud of the work you guys do, um, and you'll be trained well, you'll do good work, and we look forward to a, a long career with the city of Wilmer Police Department. So, council, anything that any of you want to, council, comments you want to make? Welcome aboard, Michael. Next, Mr. Holland.
Um, Mayor and Council, I'm pleased to introduce Tyler Baumshin. Did I get it right? Close enough. But Tyler's been with us for a week or two now, and he is Engineering One, he's going to be working for Sean. He has some experience over the last several years, and he's worked with the different municipalities, and, uh, of course, he has an engineering degree, and he has some local interest here, I believe, some family or maybe soon-to-be family here in the area, so that's what interests him here in Wilmer, but he was an outstanding candidate, and he did very well in his interview, and he's impressed me with his, basically with his enthusiasm and desire to learn, and so we're glad to have him on board, and if you have any questions of him, I'm sure he'll answer that.
Tyler, welcome aboard. I've had an opportunity to interact with you on two different occasions so far, and your responses and answers to questions astonish me in the fact you've only been here a week. So, um, so you're doing great work, welcome to the city of Wilmer, I think you'll find a very good, be a very good place to work. Um, I know you've got a good team that you work with there in the engineering office, and I know that in one of the conversations, you know, Curly came in and was involved in that conversation as well as, well, the other one was with Daryl, but, but anyways, uh, welcome aboard, we're glad you're here, and, uh, welcome back to the neighborhood, so, and, and you'll be marrying into good roots if you're not already married into it, so...
Oh, yeah, I'm not married yet.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Council, have you anything to add?
Welcome.
Welcome, we're glad you're here. Well, you can stick around the whole night and listen to the whole meeting if you choose to, but if you don't want to do that, you can take off early too, so... Okay, no problem, thanks Tyler. Michael, same thing, uh, Michael already left, okay? Next, we have a discussion of cafe, restaurant licenses, soft drink licenses, Judy, I mean, Ms. Thompson.
Annually, the city issues cafe, restaurant licenses and soft drink licenses for establishments as what's required by our municipal code, and we recently received an inquiry about the necessity of the city issuing both the cafe, restaurant, and soft drink licenses, and after review, its staff is recommending that we discontinue issuing the soft drink licenses effective December 31st, 2018, and to direct City Attorney Robert Scott to draft an ordinance to reflect said change. The licenses are an annual, they run from January 1st through December 31st, and since we've already collected all the funds for this year and sent out the licenses, we're recommending that change at the end of the year.
Again, this would be up for discussion, um, you know, one of the things, I think that this probably started back before we had a county sanitarian, and now that the county has the sanitarian that goes out and does the inspections and does their work, really, this fee is collected by the city, and all we basically do is process a piece of paper and send them a license, and, you know, that's not a very good bang for the buck, and so, I talked with Judy about it, I'm sorry, Ms. Thompson about it, she did the research on it, and that's staff's recommendation, so, unless there's a discussion on that, if you want to discuss it, we can, Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification, soft drink licenses, soft drink vending machines, is that what we're referencing?
No, it's the ability to sell soft drink at a restaurant, so it's not, it's not a vending license, no.
It's your fountain drinks, all your establishments.
So like, if you go to, as an example, Green Mill, you order a soda, we charge them a $30 fee to be able to sell that soda, that's what that would be for.
Okay.
Councilmember Plumb?
I applaud any efforts to dismiss any unnecessary taxes or fees.
I didn't think there would be a lot of resistance on this one, but, um, you know, I think at the time it was in, put in place, it probably served its purpose, but, you know, we just didn't update it, and, um, what happened is when we were reviewing, which is on the agenda, consent agenda tonight, when we were reviewing that, I asked the question, why? And then, that's why, that's why that didn't come, normally that comes to us back in January, that's why it didn't come to us in January, it was coming today because we had to do the research on this one, because we wanted to fix it before we adopted everything, so... Okay, so we'll move that forward to the next council meeting for approval. Next is, uh, Mr. Holland, an agreement with Candy Island County for assessing services.
Mayor and Council, this was, uh, brought to me by a letter that I received from the county requesting increase in their fee services, and tonight, I'm, you know, recommending that we adopt a resolution approving this contract with final approval to the city attorney and myself, uh, but this afternoon, I also had a meeting with our city attorney, and at this time, I'm going to turn the mic over to him, and he has a few comments because he knows a little bit more about the history of the agreement that we have with the county, and he also has a recommendation.
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, when the city, uh, moved away from having its own assessment department and entered into the contract with the county to take over those services, it entered into a contract that I at least reviewed if I didn't draft myself, um, that doesn't have a termination date, so what you received from the county, I have to assume, was the form agreement that they send to all the jurisdictions for which they perform assessing services. You already have a contract with the county that remains in effect until either party gives six months' notice of termination, which I don't understand has happened. Under the terms of the contract, you had specifically negotiated fees for 2016 and 2017, and then it provided that in 2018, you'd move to a per parcel charge in line with what the county charged other jurisdictions. I think you've seen now what the county charges other jurisdictions, that's in this, uh, new contract they sent out. What I'd recommend would simply be that the city, unless it's unhappy with those rates, accept those charges from the county. Essentially, I think the county has flexibility under the existing contract to just inform the city of what the per parcel charges will be, and the city's remedy, if it were unhappy with that, would be to try and negotiate something different or ultimately terminate the existing contract. So essentially, what you have received now from the county is notice of what the per parcel charges will be under the existing contract, and I think a simple vote accepting those charges would, should be sufficient. I think before the next meeting, staff can confirm that's okay with the county, but I don't know why it wouldn't be, given that you have an existing contract already.
Discussion, Councilmember Plumb?
Uh, so, Mr. Scott, these rates would then be contractual, so, um, I guess, instead of the county just changing the rates, that this would lock us in, for lack of better speak?
Yeah, I mean, I think the county essentially can dictate the rates at this point, they can inform the city under the existing contract what its per parcel charges are going to be, and if the city weren't agreeable and couldn't work something out with the county, oh, the only remedy the city would have would be to terminate the agreement, and I guess figure out how to resume the assessment services itself. So, I think it's consistent with the contract for the county to just inform you of their fee schedule per parcel going forward.
Okay, so this basically just kind of increases transparency and lets us know what the future holds short-term?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we know what other cities are paying the county per parcel as a comparison? I mean, I mean...
My understanding in having talked with, or, Mr. Holland, do you know that answer?
No, I do not, I was looking around to see if anybody in the staff would know that.
From what I understand, the goal of the county was to put everybody at the same rate, the only difference is on the commercial rate, the commercial rate of $25 was the difference, um, and that was from when we put the agreement together last time, and we were working, I believe it was with Larry at that time when we did that, um, and the goal was to put everybody at the same rate across the county, and my understanding is that's what's been done.
Shouldn't we find that out, though? I mean, uh, if, if all the other cities that they're doing are paying the 12, and they're going to see this increase also in the next four years? I mean, there's a lot of parcels in Wilmer.
There are, right.
And it's, it's, ends up being a tax on our people. Our constituents are going to be paying this bill, people that live in, own property in Wilmer.
Right, you'll remember that this is lower than what we were paying before when we had our own, when we had our own staff.
Right, but now it's going up.
I believe it's still less.
We can believe that, but shouldn't we, shouldn't we find that out?
Yeah, we should confirm that, yes. Mr. Holland, can we find that out?
I sure can, I'll find out.
Thank you. And then, can we do a comparison of what we were paying before we entered into this contract, and then what it would be subsequent?
Yes, sir.
That help?
Yeah, thank you.
Additional questions? You good?
I'm fine, this is similar to what the other counties charge their residents.
Okay, you just had that look like you wanted to say something, I wanted to make sure I gave you that opportunity.
No, it's cheaper this way than what we had before.
Considerably, right, right. Okay, next, uh, so you have your direction on that, and what we need back for the next meeting, so move that forward. Purchasing policy revision, Mr. Holland.
Um, Mayor and Council, this is, um, our purchasing policy, and basically, we looked at raising the amounts that I could approve is basically what we're looking at, um, and staff did review Arden Hills, Becker, Stuartville, Brooklyn Park, and looked at the policy of Arden Hills, and where there's a state statute that does limit the amount that the administrator can approve, that does still require quotes and required sealed bids, but tonight, we're looking at, um, raising the amount that I can approve from $25,000 up to $100,000. Now, these are for budgeted items, there was also a recommendation for unbudgeted items also to go up $100,000, but I would tell you, I personally changed that myself, staff had recommended that, uh, but I don't feel comfortable, uh, purchasing things that are unbudgeted without the council's full knowledge, not that you wouldn't know on that budgeted items, you're also, you know, fully disclosed, you know, every month on what we're buying, and you get the records, but I feel like it's sort of a double protection so that everybody's on board that we've purchased something that was maybe unbudgeted. As far as the department directors, I'm recommending raising that from $5,000 up to $25,000, and then the same thing on the unbudgeted items to remain the same at $5,000. I think that at times, it's not a, an everyday occurrence, but sometimes when we're trying to move projects along or purchase things or have events, and we have contractors demanding payment, uh, it helps expedite things so that we stay on track with what we're doing, and we don't get bogged down in bureaucracy, and so, I recommend that we approve it, I think it's been a while, uh, I think this policy, my understanding with the history was it was lowered with the previous administrators in the past, and so, I'm just recommending that we bring it back up to statute limits. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Well, I'm not opposed to looking at this revision, for me, it's a combination of our practice with our capital, um, with our CIP process, and how we approve that, the budgeted items. To me, they're, they're, they go together, and so, while we have said in the past that we approve the capital improvement, um, items, it has always been treated as more of a, well, this is our wish list for 2018, and if something comes up, we may not do this one, and we've had times where department heads have come back and said, I'm not going to do this item this year, I want to do this item this year, and so, I would like to see us review that process and combine what we agree to in that capital improvement process with this, um, purchase policy revision, because I'm not comfortable right now that, that, that we did our due diligence on the capital improvement items listed in 2018 to just go flat across to say, yeah, let's just do it, um, and I think there's other examples where we've had to shuffle money from one project to another, and I'm, I'm not opposed to looking at the two of them together, but I, I struggle with just doing this blanket approval right now without, um, reviewing the items that, that we're discussing that are budgeted.
I would, um, say that, um, changing this policy will not change the CIP process, um, the process will continue to be something that's, uh, changing, ever-changing every year, and sometimes, you know, you don't have the money to buy things, and then sometimes during the mid-year, you find out there's a different priority in a department, for example, so changing this purchasing policy will not, uh, preclude something from changing in the CIP, but I understand your frustration with that, I've, you know, get frustrated with that every year myself because, you know, that's part of managing the budget, is that when you have a CIP budget, that's, it's not a wish list in my words, it's, it's a list that we plan on purchasing, and so, that's the commitment that we made, and so, when someone comes to me and they say they, they're not going to buy a certain item and they want something different, it is scrutinized very heavily before we do that, and I don't take it lightly, but changing the purchasing policy will not affect the CIP. I will also say that I don't, I haven't reviewed Steve's, um, slides tonight, but we need to have that up there every month, you need to have the CIP on a spreadsheet so you can see what we've purchased year-to-date, and so that you can track that, uh, and the citizens so we can see how we're doing our spending, and I will make that suggestion.
I just want to clarify, when I said wish lists, I, I've been supportive of the CIP process and what we go through, but I'm not sure that the council has made a commitment to, I mean, we've agreed to the CIP, but we haven't treated it that these are items that we've approved, and I... And I just think that we, as a council, need to make a commitment to, if we're looking at that, then that is a commitment on our part. And so I feel there's a gap right now between what the process is and how we treat it. And I'd just like to see us close that gap before we just increase it.
Councilmember Mesky.
I actually concur with everything that Councilmember Nelson just said. The way, and I've not been on the council long, but in the two years that I've been here, it's been one of these things. We throw all this stuff in the CIP, and it's this enormous amount of money, and we know it's not funded, and we only have so much money to fund it. This way, the way this is reading, the city administrator would make some of those items become priorities. And I don't necessarily have a problem with the budgeted items, but I do agree, I don't know if that budgeted is clearly funded, and that's the difference. But as you look in there, because I remember having this first conversation when we changed this, we were concerned about unbudgeted items, and we asked for those to be provided in reports, monthly reports. If you move this up and we are not going to change the CIP process, I could see where we would examine these budgeted items on a monthly basis as well, come in so we know if the city administrator has moved and spent money where the council perhaps has not been man definitive that that's where he wanted to go. The city administrator is fully aware that if you go in a direction perhaps the council wasn't happy, that you'll probably hear about it in the month that those expenditures were made. But if you want that responsibility, I, I am not opposed to it whatsoever, but I think that monthly reports for the unbudgeted expenses should probably then include the budgeted expenses as well.
And that's what I, I believe the monthly report would reflect.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we were elected, and our number-one duty to our constituents is fiscal responsibility. And to give the administrator $100,000 up to that amount spent without our approval, I don't like it. Same with the department heads, $5,000 is fine. I don't know why it needs to be 25,000. I think all purchases, whether budgeted or not on budget, need to come through the council. We need to approve it. I think $25,000 for the administrator is plenty. It's a good threshold. I don't think it has to be higher because there's a state statute that says we can go this high. Doesn't mean you have to. I mean, any one of us could bring an AR as long as we're permitted to this council meeting, and we're not going to do it. It's illegal. We don't have to meet that state statute. I, I think all of the expenditures in the budget or not in the budget need to come through the council, at least everything over $25,000. It is our number-one responsibility, fiscal. And otherwise, what are we here for?
Councilmember Swantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to note that I actually am in support of this policy change. I feel that when you look at the total of our full budget, $100,000, although it sounds like a lot, when we're talking the dollars that we are and the millions that we are and the percentage it is, I'm sorry, I didn't calculate that before coming, but it's like you or I asking our spouse if we could spend $30 at the grocery store or something like that. We have to look at this relatively. If we have approved these dollars already in our budget, and we've had that conversation, why would we not trust our administrator and staff to be able to execute these items as was intended by the council? I think it shows trust. I think it shows a relationship. I think it shows a good process. I agree with the item that it slows down the process for them to be able to take action. I really have no problem with it. I think it's, comes with the level of authority that the positions they hold as administrator and director should be able to hold.
Councilmember Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hear Councilmember Christiansen's reservations in this, but I also hear what Mr. Mesky had to say. I think when it comes to our council, we put an immense amount of, of effort, at least since I've been here, on zooming out our scale and, and our scope as a council and trying to get to that 50,000-foot, 100,000-foot level. And I understand when it comes to budgeted and unbudgeted items, you know, the, you know, dollars and cents matter. But as of right now, we have no reason to believe that, that any of our staff is, is not looking out for the best interest of our city. And I think, you know, the old, the old verbiage, you got to give somebody enough rope to hang themselves. I mean, that, that kind of holds true. And I think with the proper, there's a way that we can do this, and we can formulate a plan that will allow us as a council to operate at that 100,000-foot level, but still have the, the checks and balances in place so that we can look at it monthly and make sure, okay, we are still responsible for, you know, our fiscal responsibility as a council is still there. We're doing our due diligence, but we're not getting down into the weeds and overseeing each one of these things and making the gears of government turn so slowly. So I think there, there's got to be this happy medium, someplace in between, where we get that level of comfort with both the dollar amounts that are able to be spent without all this process and paperwork and whatever, but then also the accountability on the other side of it that makes for this smoothly, you know, smooth transition and the transparency that the public deserves and we need as a council to be comfortable with it.
Mayor, if, if I could add something, and I think this is a good example, is, you know, since I've been here, I've authorized approvals of $200,000, $330,000, $400,000, and I didn't come to the council for approval. The secret is, that's for services. That was for the street projects. That was for some of the projects and services that we had. So what I'm telling you is I'm already signing those approval. Now, you approved the million and a half dollars for the street project, but it's paid in increments, and it comes to me. And it goes through the engineer, it goes through the finance officer, and it goes through myself. So there's about four people that sign off on that. But we do that right now. And so if you look strictly at the dollar amounts, you know, I do that on a weekly basis right now. It's just for different items.
So in hearing what the council said, I think what we're asking for is we're asking for more accountability before those purchases are made. So if we said something to the effect of we would be comfortable with those dollar amounts, if we knew those purchases were going to be made before they were made, would we, we be comfortable with that? Because I think of the, as an example, the Rice Park project. And a lot of that stuff got held up simply because it was like, I think, $27,000. And, you know, Steve couldn't go ahead and move forward with ordering that equipment because he had to wait till the next council meeting to get permission to go ahead and approve that purchase. And so, you know, when, when you actually get down to the nuts and bolts of it, you know, the council isn't at the same level that it was 20 years ago. And all we're doing is we're saying that the, the staff needs the ability to move forward. And the other benchmark that we may be able to put in there is, unless it's been approved in the budgeting process with a dollar assigned to it in the capital budget process. So maybe we need some work on what we've got in front of us, but I'm a very strong supporter that we need to increase these dollar amounts. Mr. Met, uh, Councilmember Mesky.
I want to repeat it again, but if that's the case, the CIP process will have to change where we say these are our priorities and these are the budgeted dollars we have for them. When that thing is bigger than the budget we actually have, then we're going to have to have some accountability if we're going to allow these authorizations because we didn't do it that way. We basically have put these things in, and often we hear, well, it's in the CIP. There's a lot in there that we don't have funding for, but it's in the document. But if now we're going to say, we're going to let these expenditures go because they're in the CIP and we've signed off, then as a council, that's going to have to balance. Otherwise, that's kind of a crazy thing, and it speaks to what Councilmember Christiansen said. We're now then letting the priorities be priorities of, of city administrators and department directors when we, as a council, didn't do our job. And so that, to me, is problematic. I don't have a problem with this process, again, if we have monthly reports, because the one month, if all of a sudden Ike spends $100,000 in the CIP that we did not agree as a council was a good project, he knows what's going to happen on that next month. That's not going to be a pretty sight. So if he brings those forward, I have no problem if they're ones that we've all agreed on. And whatever that budget number, I, I don't have a problem if he spends what it says, it's what it is, because that's what we've said it costs. I would say then you could put it to whatever the project costs, spend it. But I, I know where we're at. We're at a slow transition from one extreme to another, perhaps, but there's, there's a way to make this work and get to the spirit of what we want to do here.
Councilmember Nelson.
I think Councilmember Mesky said what we've agreed upon. And all I'm saying is we need the checks and balances to say what we've agreed upon so that we don't have to look back and say, well, we didn't authorize that. I also have a concern when it comes to some of the project management, that sometimes there are things I think that could be planned for in advance that have been last minute and, and those types of things. And so I, I would hope that we can find more accountability in that project management piece, that we aren't having to authorize each little piece, that, that we can plan ahead to do some of those things. I think we've got more homework to do. I'd like to suggest that we bring this back again with, with maybe some more information regarding the, the process of the, what we do after the CIP with that. Even a list of the things that are in our CIP this year that this would apply to so that we have a better understanding of what it is we're trying to accomplish. We shouldn't be trying to hold things back, but I think there's protection on both sides, both for staff and for the council, to make sure that this process is correct and that we are committing to the things that we talk about. So I'm not ready to support this at this point in time without combining it with some other processes with the CIP.
Okay. When would you like to see that come back?
I don't know, but I think this is also probably an appropriate time to talk about. This should come back to a work session for additional conversation. We've had some things that we've talked about at the work session that we haven't agreed to that end up on the, end up on the next council session. I think this needs to come back to the work session for additional conversation.
Okay. Is there consensus on that? Okay. Mr. Okens, Finance Monthly Department Report.
Mayor, could I ask for clarification? When do you want to bring it back for a work session? And what, what do you want staff to bring?
Um, we will work on that offline.
Okay.
Mr. Okens, I know that there was a comment that you wanted to make there, and I thought it'd be easier if you just came over here, and then we can just go right into your monthly report.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In regards to action and on the report that I'll be giving you tonight, as well as, as capital, our plans, and historically have always been to come back to the council in March. That's normally how long it takes the process to reconcile and close out the previous year. We will be asking for budgetary amendments, not only for 2017, but with the new process that the council enacted a year or two ago about coming back quarterly rather than at each event for budgetary amendments. We'll be having those for any kind of changes that we've had or incurred in 18 as well. So the second work session or the second meeting, normally when I do my monthly report, we'll have a list of items, and you can decide at that point if you want to move them forward to the council meeting that same evening. So we'll have some of those items at that meeting.
Councilmember Nelson.
We did talk about have, having finance meetings also, and maybe this, maybe these two things need to happen at a specific meeting or back here. I'm not sure.
Well, what we talked about is that the fifth Monday, there would be emphasis on public works and, I'm sorry, on labor and finance. That's what we talked about. And so, but, I mean, what I'm seeing here is that, I'm not seeing a whole lot of consensus, and I think it might have to actually come back during the budgeting process to where when we do the budget for 2019, that we actually start talking about that process, and maybe we enact some of this stuff in the 2019 budget process.
And I'll talk a little bit about that in my, in my report tonight. To talk a little bit to the process on, on capital improvements for the new council members primarily, is that there are really two facets to the capital improvement program. One is for the vehicles. One is for the, the capital improvements that would be non-vehicle orientated. There are staff committees for both of those, where all of the submissions get put or sent. They're analyzed, reviewed, as we've presented to the council. There's a criteria list that they're ranked and prioritized, that those committees then send them forth to the administrator who works with the mayor in the budget process for the capital processes. The, the, there's a five-year projection on those two processes, but the, only the current year is funded. So the out-years are only projections and, and looking forward and planning. And so the only ones that are funded are the current year. And this year was kind of abnormal in that we had a large number of bonded projects that came out of the council retreat. So those, as they move forward, will be coming back to you with a project budget that will detail the total that's in the CIP.
Okay. Go forward with your report, please.
This report, Mr. Mayor, is similar to other monthly reports that we give to you. We talk about the investments, the cash portfolio, financial snapshot on the general and waste treatment fund. In hearing the discussion earlier, we will be adding the capital improvement. We have those in your packet. We just don't have it on the PowerPoint presentation. We will start making those slides so they're here as well. We, at the end of December, and these are unaudited preliminary numbers, we work with the departments once we get to this point, especially in the capital projects area, to determine if there are additional projects, if they're closed out, or similar to the discussion that you had there. You see that the December 31 balance of the investments was 41.6 million. This is somewhat down from previous years. As in other months, we break down the, the portfolio on the maturity dates, and you'll notice that the maturity dates, and we've talked to this in, in a couple of previous months, is that we're short on the, on the short term. This is a portfolio that our office kind of inherited. It was back when interest rates and when they were calling a number of investments, and I've mentioned that before. We have worked with a local institution. Go back here. You'll see on page six, which is year electronic, page 23 of the, of the presentation, the investment of 41.6, and then our cash balances. I mentioned at the last report that I gave that month of February, we had a large amount of bond payments that were due. I actually did an analysis between January and today that we have had a, spent $7.5 million more than we've taken in in the first two months. Not all of that has contributed to the general fund, only 1.4, 1.5 million. Again, the majority of that is our debt service fund, which is 4.5 million, of which of that $2.5 million is of the hospital, Caris Health. And we are working through procedures there with the conversion from Rice Hospital to Caris Health. So it may look like we had $10 million at the end of the year, which we did did in liquid assets, but we have since spent the majority of that in the first two months. The general operating fund, you'll see there is at 98.8%. I'd just highlight a couple of items if I could there. Licenses and permits, the, includes the building permits. That revenue is, is dependent upon the amount of activity. We've had a good activity in the past few years. We are roughly $142,000 of that is over what we had anticipated for building permit revenue. You'll see there that the intergovernmental transfer is somewhat shy. That's our local government aid. The amount budgeted there was an anticipated amount that did not get funded totally with this legislative session, so. The next page is the, basically the administrative sections of the general fund. You'll see that there's a few items that are over. We will be coming back, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, to you. We will be coming back, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, to you with the details. If there are activities that the council approves, where it may not be budgeted primarily in the areas of personal services, it's similar to our 2018 budget. We budget for personal services as we are under contract. Since the contracts, the labor contracts are open, we budget for those anticipated costs in another area and come back to you on a council for departmental budget amendments based on contract settlements. You have set the department level as the control factor, so anytime that goes over, we need to come back to you, and we've had those discussions with past audits, and we will be doing that quarterly. And then at the end of the year, it's kind of a house cleaning type item there for those departments that are over. The large one, and we've talked about that, is office services, and we've changed the process of how we account for that moving forward. The second page of the general fund is, a lot of that is engineering and leisure services. Again, you'll see that there are about three departments that are over budget, and again, we'll be bringing that back to the council for official action, but we will have it at the work session prior to that. If I can go back to the revenue page, which is page 24 of your electronic version, you'll notice there that $15.4 million is the unaudited amount that we took in compared to the 15.6 that we had anticipated, or 98%. We have talked about the council's use of fund balances, and that if there are excess fund balances from 2015, they are factored into here but not shown as a revenue. Those were 1.3 million. And if you go to page 26, we spent 15.7 million. There is one additional internal entry that will happen on the transfer line there. You'll see that there's $600,000 less than what we had budgeted. That's the transfer that the mayor had put in for the street program that has not happened at this point, when this report was made. That will be coming out of there. Leaving the excess revenues and fund balance appropriations over expenditures of roughly a little under $500,000 for 2017 general fund, those dollars as past practice will be given to the mayor, as well as any other fund balance adjustments, similar to what we talked about at the last meeting, to him to be appropriated into the 2019 budget process. Now, if the council chooses to do that, they can change that process, and we can talk about that and appropriate those dollars anytime between now and that. It just has worked procedurally good to have that given to the mayor, past mayors, so that can be planned into the budgeting process. It doesn't have to be done that way. That's just a historical procedure that has worked well, but can be changed. The waste treatment fund that you see there, 9.9 million versus 9.1 million, $800,000 of profit for the waste treatment plant. And those are unaudited figures that we need to reconcile with municipal utilities, and we do do that. With that, Mr. Mayor, I do not, as I mentioned, have the slides for the capital improvement that you have included in your packet. The first one listed there would be the 2017, where we are year-to-date. We've sent notices out to departments, and we'll be working with the departments for them to let us know if these projects are final, if there are outstanding invoices. Anything that would be in our process will come back to you in March, and those numbers then will show up on the 2018 report as carryovers. Anything that has been finalized and there are dollars left, again, will be given to the mayor to be re-appropriated in the 19 process unless the council changes that procedure. And the final few pages, starting on page 35 of your electronic version, is the listing of the 2018 capital improvement projects that have been approved. And as of this date, we have not, in our office, received any invoices that would be charged to those accounts. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselor? I have one question. On the early payments for 2018 property taxes, and you may not know this answer, but will those dollars come to us early then because they were full-year payments? Or will those come to us graduated as they have in the past?
If they pay their total property tax bill, those will come to us in the settlement, which will be in the end of June, 1st of July, unless we, and by statute, I believe we can request those funds early, which we have looked at in the past. We have never done that, but I believe there's a process in place where cities can request the counties to submit any collections they have prior to the June date.
So then, so if someone had paid their full year's taxes, as an example, and I mean, you know, we don't have anything like what Hanipan County had, some 400, I don't know if it was more than that, but anyways, so that would all be paid to us then? It wouldn't be a graduated payment on those ones that had been paid in full?
They would not be graduated. They'd be given to us in their entirety, as would any kind of prepaid assessments.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a, this might involve Mr. Holland. Now, going back to what we were talking about with the, having your authority for budgeted items of like up to $100,000 for capital improvements. So what I'm understanding, and maybe I'm off-base here. For example, on this police department, 2009 Chevy Impala, if we paid $20,000 and they come back and say, hey, the car is ready to go, and we need the additional, I don't know, 30, 34,000, you're saying you should have authority to pay that? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, I think I understand your question is basically, if it's a budgeted item and it's over $25,000, I'm saying, yes, I would pay that. Now, having said that, but you made the assumption I would pay it, and that's what made me hesitate that. If it was authorized and it was, you know...
That's what I'm saying.
And it was budgeted, then yes, that's what I'm requesting to pay for, versus bringing it back to the council for approval.
Okay, okay. So what I'm seeing here is the capital improvement that we've approved for 2018, and that's what you want to work with.
Right. And it's funny that you mentioned like a police car, because I heard that was one of the examples in the past. There's some fiasco or something mixed up with police cars or something like that. But, I mean, to me, and this is all seriousness, I mean, that's part of my job, is to look at these budgeted items and make these decisions and talk with the directors, and so that I'm sure that when I'm signing off on things, it's budgeted and it's under the amount, and if it had to be bid out, then I review that. And since I've been here, you can ask the department heads and you can ask the finance officer. When I don't see signatures and I don't see bids, and it comes from engineers outside or it comes internally, it doesn't get my signature, it goes back. And in the first 90 days I was here, I sent a lot of paperwork back, and then everybody got on board. He's not signing anything unless it's complete. So I try to do my best.
Okay. I just was trying to get a clarification. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did I, hopefully that answered your question?
I believe so. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Appreciate it. Next, we have the Public Works Department Monthly Report. Mr. Manzer.
There you go. About that? Well, I appreciate the time to come here. Sean usually does this, but I just got to tell you that I feel very fortunate to be in the position I'm at, and I have a heck of a team of guys to work with. And if you guys don't know those guys, get to know them, because I'm telling you what, there's a lot of talent in those 22 guys out there, and they want to do the best for the city, and I'm proud to have them as part of my team. And they've done a lot of good things. We've got, this is a picture we just took this year, actually Councilmember Alvarado took that for us, and that's a 1969 V-plow that was sitting out in our boneyard out there. And we had one of those green signs out there, and I just thought after, we changed leadership out there, just sometimes you can change things. And that was one of the things that bothered me. Every day I drove in, I looked at that green sign, I just wanted to run it over. And it just, just by coincidence, we happened, we're doing a lot of house cleaning out there, and we spent this winter, three guys have been cleaning house, and we, actually, to be honest with you, I don't know how many were around here when they redid the downtown in the early 80s. We still had the old light poles from downtown laying in our yard, and we hauled all those to Phillips Recycling and just, we just cleaned house. We're just trying to get organized. And I always feel that if we're going to take care of the city and our own home doesn't look good, I just don't think that's a good example. So I try to get our own house in order, and we've been, with the lack of snow, we've been able to do a lot of projects. So been real pleased with this sign. It was kind of, I don't know, it just kind of came to me and another guy, we're talking about it, and then a friend of mine, some of you might know, Ron Van Sluton, who he has, him and I are good friends, been friends from the day I moved to Wilmer. He actually, he used to do that type of work, paint corridors back right out of high school, and him and another guy, he used to do that. And so I threw it at him, I said, hey, what did you think about doing that? And so he came out to our shop and painted that for us, and so that's all hand painted. He did a real nice job, and I'm really proud of that, that little improvement there, and then the staff, of course. And Kelsey there in the front, she's the one that, she kind of keeps all our stuff rolling, and really happy to have her as part of it. So I'm going to try to navigate these slides here. Okay. There again, I'd like to, you know, thank the council for their support for equipment and stuff. Takes a lot of equipment to operate in Wilmer. I mean, we've got 10 dump trucks, six front-end loaders, two road graders. We've never had a backhoe, and with the stormwater, the push on, you know, cleaning up our stormwater, one of the things we have to do is we have to clean stormwater outfalls. Well, we really didn't have a machine that could do that. And then the second part of this machine was, the way it works right now, when we have a snow, a snow event, all of our units leave the shop, and all six of our front-end loaders go out in different parts of the town. And so then, as the guys are plowing snow and sanding, they need more sand, they'd call up one of the guys, say, hey, can you run back to the shop and load us up? So they're running across town to load some trucks. Now this unit will be able to load our trucks, just sitting out there at the shop, and then we've got it for cleanup around the shop. And then, of course, the backhoe is a, it's a whole nother animal that we're really excited to have as part of our units. This here is, this has been in the works for quite a while. It's a parallelogram lift. It took me a while to even pronounce that. I struggled with that for a while, but what, this is our mechanic shop, and this is the third bay of our mechanic shop, and this actually comes back from Mike Strucreft when he was a mechanic there. And some of the fire trucks, we can't lift. Any of our snow plows right now, if we have a snow plow that would go down in the middle of a storm where we had to get it up in the air, they got to strip all the snow removal equipment off just to get it up in the air. We're now with this new lift, it'll lift up to 75,000 pounds, and they'll be able to drive a snow blower and loader up there and get it up in the air. It's just, it's long overdue. They had fire trucks they couldn't lift. Now they'll lift all the fire trucks up on there, so this is really a good improvement. Kyle Redun's one of our new mechanics out there. He's kind of took this project under his wing, and he's, initially when Mike Strucreft wanted to put this lift in, it was going to be a above-floor mount, just mount on top of the floor, and we're like, doesn't make sense to tie a whole bay up with this lift. So we tore the concrete out, and you'll see, the guys are, they're putting the footings for it, and there's some piping and some plumbing and that. We all did, we did all that work in-house with our guys. We did hire John Schaefer to kind of walk through it with us. He's a concrete contractor, and he kind of helped us through it, just because I was afraid of taking this project down, and then we'd get, in the day it was snow, we went to get back to it. Well, you guys know how this winters works, we've been able to stay at this project. We started it January 8th, was when we busted the concrete, and they're hooking it up. They were working on it today, and they should finish it up tomorrow or the next day, so. This is another, this is what the concrete looks like now. The lift, that's the lift on the sides there, and those will drop into the troughs there, and then that will sit flush in our floor there. We initially worked, you know, how you'd start doing things, and we ended up taking out a fair amount more concrete than we anticipated, but at the end, I think we're going to have a better product. This is kind of, you've probably seen our guys out and about this. They're taking some trees down here. We've been doing a lot of tree trimming and a lot of requests. We get a lot of requests from citizens to trim their trees, and we don't do a lot of that in the summer. It's really not the best time to do it, so we try to get at this winter. So we've been going after that pretty hot and heavy here, and we'll probably do that for the next month, depending on what the weather does, but as long as it kind of stays like it, we'll keep going between that and snow. This truck here is, this is a shared unit between us and the wastewater. This is a vaculator truck. We use that for vacuuming out debris in sewers. This truck, actually, the chassis of that truck is a repurposed snow plow that we replaced. So that chassis is a 2005, so what we decided to do was to keep that chassis, it had just shy of 100,000 miles on it, but this unit, as a rule, doesn't get a lot of miles on it. So we felt this was a good use for it. So instead of trading that truck, we kept the chassis, and then we sold the snow equipment off of it on GovDeals auction. And then we sent that chassis down to Iowa, and they mounted up this vaculator on there, and it's, guys are really excited about it. The last one we had was a trailer mount unit, and this is going to be a lot more user-friendly for us. This here is, this is one of our newest trucks that we got, and those white tanks, that's kind of a new thing with the change in leadership. We kind of look at things a little different. And I had went to a conference in Brooklyn Center on snow and salt, and it was probably 300 people there from different cities, MinDOT and stuff, and they asked if anybody does not wet their salt, and we're a city that's never wet our salt before. And actually, that's a practice that's been around for a long time, but salt needs moisture to be activated, and with the push of using less product, you know, with storm runoff, this actually is going to work to our advantage. We set up two trucks right now with that, and we're probably going to try to do two more trucks like that. But basically, we want to use this on our higher traffic areas. Typically, when you put dry sand and salt down on a road that's got speeds of 30 or more, it takes like 20 cars to go by, and that stuff's on the side of the road. So North 71's a prime example. They would go up there and sand the heck out of it, and then all of a sudden, the traffic comes in, you can go back a half hour later, there's no sand on the road. So this has really made a difference. We've noticed it gets that salt working, so it's, right now, we're buying the brine product from the county highway. We actually had a little roundtable discussion with the county highway guys, Mel and Dave Fritz, and then they had some of their operators and our operators, and we just talked about how that, how to do it, you know, how the process worked, because it was new to us. And so we hope that maybe next year, we can add a couple more units, where we'd have at least four units like that. This is a new mower that we got. Some of you have probably seen the unit. It's called a trackless unit. It's used for sidewalks in the wintertime for plowing snow, and it's a very expensive machine. We have two of them. It's like a trackless unit, when you'd order it, you're looking at about $180,000 to replace it. And it's a very high maintenance machine. Parts are very expensive, because it's a municipal-only machine, and they hit you pretty hard on the parts. So we actually had those tracklasses on an eight-year replacement cycle, and so we were using them for mowing, just trying to get our money's worth out of them. Well, we're having so many problems with the mowing, so we demoed one of these last year, last summer, and Galen Seehus, and he, who does most of the mowing with the trackless, is he used this mower for a week, and he'd mowed, he's done it enough, so he knows what the timeframe is on certain parks, and he had told me, he says, I just did Sunrise Park. He goes, I say, I cut 45 minutes off of that mowing of that park, just the efficiency of this machine. And at the end of the day, at the end of the day, he was using about two-thirds the amount of fuel compared to what the trackless, and I figured this will last us 12 to 15 years where we're replacing that trackless on eight. So we're hoping, and then we're just going to have one trackless instead of two, because we do need the trackless for the wintertime use, but, so we're hoping that this is a real positive thing for us.
What's the cost of that unit?
That unit was, just the way it sits there was like $109,000. Well, we just kind of... Well, we just, kind of a little bit of a house clean, this is one of the projects that we've been working on. This is our front shop and we've been doing some painting and cleaning up and if you notice that state of Minnesota, we found that and we're cleaning the cold storage and here's this state of Minnesota, it was, I don't know who made it, the thing's got to be six foot tall, so it was kind of cool. So we bolted it up and a wall there, just kind of show you some of the improvements. This is, the guys were doing some, just, we do a lot of sign work this time of year and they're just upgrading some traffic signs. That's by Rural Tire, we're changing the turn lanes, the way they flow there, so they're putting up a sign there that indicates what the new turn lanes would be. So we do a lot of, you know, traffic sign work when we can and the other thing we do a lot of in the wintertime is fire hydrant repair because they seem to get knocked off quite often. So that's, that's pretty much what I have. I'd be, invite anybody to stop out anytime and check out our facility. I'm very proud of it and I'm very proud of our guys and you got a good group of guys out there and I appreciate being a part of that team. Anybody got any questions, I'd certainly ask them, otherwise thanks for the opportunity to talk to you.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation and I agree, your guys are great ambassadors for our city, so I appreciate that. Going back to your first slide, that backhoe,
Yeah.
new case backhoe.
Yep.
Now, that looks like some sort of jackhammer.
Yep.
Do you have other attachments for the backhoe portion of it?
Yeah, we've got three different buckets that go in the back. We just happened to have that back, that hammer on there that day that I took that picture.
Okay.
But, so we've got a narrower bucket for like trenching and we've got a standard digging bucket, which is like 24-inch, and then we bought a 48-inch, what they call ditch bucket, it's got a smooth edge on it for like cleaning out ditches for water to flow and stuff.
Cool, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's a nice machine. We demoed three different machines. We did a, you know, those salesmen, they want to sell you stuff, so they're bringing their machines in, but we did a CAT and a John Deere. We've got a, most of our stuff is John Deere out there and primarily it's because that was the only salesperson that was calling on us and we buy everything off the state contract and it's, it's really a nice way to purchase things on there, you know? You don't have to write the specs up, you can get what fits your needs and, but this case salesman came by and he just happened to stop in. I said, hey, he was, I'm new and just trying to reestablish his territory and I said, well, here's what we got going on, you know, we had this John Deere in the lot. He goes, I'd love to bring you a machine. Well, it ended up being the cheapest machine, the guys liked it the best, so it was kind of a twofer for us, so. But I, like I said, I appreciate the opportunity to have that machine on our fleet. It's, I think it's been long overdue to have that machine and it'll do us well.
Good, thank you.
Gary, hold on, you're not done yet.
Okay.
You know, all I have to say is you're giving the chief a run for his money tonight.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, the chief does a great job and you guys at Public Works, you guys do a great job too.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that and, you know, and the thing I like about this city is that we work together on things and that's across the board, you know, and if it's a civic center, you know, and Rob's doing a great job out there and I've helped Rob out and I say, Rob, I need something, what's mine is yours, you know, and that's, that's really what makes it go, you know? And so utilities, even too, we go across, across with utilities a lot on things and it works out well, so.
And you know, your guys were out this morning, bright and early. I had my driveway cleaned real nice and they came by and
Filled in.
Fill their back in for me and so I just want the public to know, they fill my yard in just like everybody else.
Yeah, they're going at midnight tonight, so we're going to clean the downtown tonight.
Perfect, perfect. So your guys do an awesome job and the thing I really appreciate in your report tonight is that you took the creative energies to empower your people to make good decisions that actually at the end of the day are going to save the taxpayers money. And, you know, you gave us two very good examples here on how you're doing your job better, more efficient, at a lower cost. And, you know, you've heard that from Councilmember Plowman tonight, you heard that from Councilmember Christensen and I can echo that across the whole council and the mayor. That's what we need. We need employees who are empowered to do the right thing and make the right decisions because you guys know it and we sit up here, we don't know the right thing.
Right.
And I remember when you came and asked us for that air conveyance unit and, I mean, some of us were asking questions, what do you need that for? Well, now when we see it today, you tell us how it's used, that was a no-brainer. I mean, we shouldn't have even questioned it, we should have just did it.
Yep.
So thank you and your crew for all the work. I think Mr. Holland wanted to make a comment, I think he gave me a high five and I kind of missed it, I looked back over and he was looking down, but Mr. Holland?
Well, you stole my thunder, you know, because I was going to commend Gary and, but I also want to mention, they shouldn't plow your house first. You shouldn't announce that on, you know, in a meeting, but that's a joke.
Well, maybe they were there at 11 and not 6.
I had a guy, I had a guy stop me that I know and he goes, well, since you're in charge now, he goes, do I get my street plowed first? I said, nope. I says, somebody's going to be first and somebody's got to be last, there's no other way of doing it, I said, so.
Right. But I wanted to say, you know, you know, Gary and I have worked probably the most of all the departments on a lot of different projects since I've been here and, you know, Gary was new to his job and pretty much when I arrived here, so we're both kind of new and so we worked together on a lot of things and, yes, when I went down and I look at the vehicles that he's purchasing, the equipment and we looked at the garage and the improvements down there and some other equipment, but we've still got a lot more to go and change it out, but we've got an excellent facility down there and the guys, like you said, are a great crew of guys working down there and so I appreciate all their hard work, but, you know, but yet, we've got some exciting things planned for this year that I'm looking forward to, so I just wanted to point that out to the council.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Thanks for your crew too. We have a few minutes and if it's okay with the council, I'll just kind of give a brief update. We had a Robins Island Task Force meeting today and that meeting went very well. We'll be having a public meeting. I don't remember the dates. Mr. Holland, do you remember them or Councilmember Nelson?
April 2nd, wasn't it?
The Tuesday, the first Tuesday in April.
April 2nd.
And so we have been meeting in regards to that. There's a lot of great energy being built around the Robins Island complex and just want to let you know that you'll be seeing that. Councilmember Fagel also serves on that and he looked at the parking lot and thought, holy buckets, there's not going to be any room to sit, but he didn't realize there was two meetings happening at the same time at the fire station today, so. But good work being done on that Robins Island Task Force. April 3rd is the date for that meeting and it'll be out at the community center and I believe it's going to be from 5:00 to 7:00, but you'll be seeing more information. We'll advertise that very heavily. So there's two concepts that are going to be forwarded and it'll have a plan for summer use and a plan for winter use. So please get that on your calendars, make sure you can be there. I'm sorry?
Did you say April 2nd or 3rd?
3rd, April 3rd, April 3rd. And so that's coming down the pipe and a lot of really exciting things there and I think that you'll be really impressed when you see what this committee has put together, so. And other than that, if anybody else has anything to bring up here, otherwise we'll just adjourn until we go to the regular meeting at 7:00. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, we're adjourned until the next meeting.